Hello and welcome to the Monday, February 12th, 2024 Hillsborough Town Report of Education meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Town Report of Education was provided on February 8th, 2024 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Ecker, can we please take role?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Laney Beeter? Mr. Lee?
He's here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray?
Here. We have a quorum. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
All right, I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed, and I don't believe we have any committee reports since the last meeting. Any committee leads have any reports? Oh, HR. Do you have a committee report, Ms. Nurse?
I'm sorry?
No rush.
Yes, I do. I am, can we pass, I come back or not?
You have the only committee report, so we can, we can-
I have to get bit up.
No worries, no worries. All right, so just, you know, I know the long Board President's Report, just to mention that we did spend the previous Monday with HYA in the second session about the long-term district planning, long-term planning for the district, and we had a very successful meeting. We got through our full agenda. We now have, I believe, one, one long and one short meeting left remaining, and we will then have some information to share with the public with the long-term district plan. So, very successful session, and appreciate all the board members' participation and leadership in the district as well in getting that completed. Okay, so we'll now move on to, yeah, we can move on to Steve. We have the ethics training with Steve Fogarty. Everything's slow on the internet right now, so we're pulling, it might be five minutes. But Steve is always quick, so.
Good evening. I am here to speak to you about school ethics, board governance, your role as a board member, and this is the annual training that you are required to participate in under your board policy and in accordance with our state statute. So I want to begin first with the role of a board member and talk a little bit about what our authority is as a board of education. So it's often said that we only have express authority, not implied authority. We are only able to do those things which the legislature has provided that we may undertake. And so in simple terms, what that means is if it's not contained in the education statutes, if we do not promulgate policies pursuant to those statutes in terms of the things that we can undertake, we are not permitted to do them. So we could not, for example, as a board, decide to incorporate another entity for purposes of generating revenue. We could not, as a board, incorporate another entity and bring that entity in as a profit-making enterprise for the school district because there's no statutory authority for us to do that. What we are required to do is enforce the rules of the state board of education. We are the policymakers with regard to the governance and the management of our schools and our employees, and we are also responsible for conducting, for, for conducting ourselves for purposes of running our schools effectively in terms of allocating both financial and human resources to do that. So as a board, we approve curriculum that meets the New Jersey student learning standards. We adopt a budget that provides for a thorough and efficient education. We hire the necessary certified personnel to educate our district students as recommended by the superintendent, and we develop policies for the management of our school district. We do not do any of those things in isolation. We do those things after we confer with and have a recommendation from our superintendent. With regard to the hiring of necessary certified personnel, the board does not have the ability to hire anyone without the recommendation of the superintendent unless it is the non-renewal of non-certified or educational support staff. That takes place on May 15th of every year. Superintendent makes a decision, that's a final decision. You do have the ability as a board, once that decision is made, if the employee appeals, comes before you, convinces you that the superintendent's decision is incorrect, that is the one and only time that you have the ability to hire someone without the superintendent's recommendation. The notion is that at one point in time, the superintendent did recommend that employee to the board. Again, that's the non-renewal hearing process that takes place with regard to non-renewal of employees. When the board acts, we act at a public meeting, and that's easy to say because we're here, we're doing that now, you have an agenda this evening that you're going to act upon, but the important part of this is that we cannot act outside of a public meeting. So we cannot act by virtue of emails or, or meetings outside of a duly convened public board meeting where there is a quorum. We need to be careful that in terms of exchanges that we may make, either telephonically or through emails or through text messages, if we are communicating with each other in real time and there's a quorum in which it is interactive and a discussion about board business, we run the risk that we are violating the Open Public Meetings Act. Keep in mind, the Open Public Meetings Act falls within the jurisdiction of the Somerset County Prosecutor's Office, so if there is a violation, that complaint goes to the prosecutor's office and is adjudicated through that process. Often, what you will say to me as a board is that there are things that we want to discuss in executive session that we may not feel comfortable with having a public discussion about. Please keep in mind that there are very specific exceptions that allow us to go into executive session, you know, matters of personnel and security and confidentiality, contracts and negotiations, student matters, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, personnel matters. Those are all carved out by the legislature. If it is a matter that must be discussed in public, doesn't fall within any of those exceptions, then the only way that we can have that discussion is through the committee process. Committee is comprised of board members that are less than a quorum of the board, so we can have an open and unfettered discussion by committee, and then presumably the committee can make recommendations to the full board. Committee meetings of less than a quorum are not official action. We're not required to advertise those meetings. They do not fall within the Open Public Meetings Act, and the minutes and discussions that take place at a committee meeting are also not subject to access under the Government, Government Records Act, which is OPRA, the Open Public Records Act. They are considered to be consultative, advisory, and deliberative. So, in terms of when do, when, when, when does the board act? We can only take official action at a public meeting. We can only, only take official action when there is a quorum, and again, please keep in mind that those emails, text messages, in theory, could constitute, constitute a meeting. Also, keep in mind that those emails, text messages, and communications may also be subject to access under the Open Public Records Act. You know, from time to time, board members will be at a meeting, they're texting, perhaps they're texting to a family member, perhaps they're texting with regard to childcare, something quite innocuous, often will be asked, will be presented the next day with a request for access to the board member's text messages because the suspicion is that board members are texting, texting to one another during the course of a meeting with regard to the matter which may be voted upon. So the fact that somebody asks for your text messages doesn't mean they get them because the, the fact that it's a government record doesn't mean there's access, it's the content of that message that may be accessible, not the text message itself, but certainly, nobody, certainly I don't want anyone to have access to your cell phones or your text messages, so you should be mindful to avoid doing that at a board meeting, and if you need to do that, you should step out so that you don't raise that suspicion among everybody in the public. The board and the administration. The board's direct responsibility is to make policy, as I said, develop plans, evaluate outcomes, and it's often said that your responsibilities are to delegate the day-to-day operations to your administrators and not to administer the schools. No board member by virtue of his or her office can exercise any administrative responsibility with, with respect to the schools or to give an individual command for the services of an employee. No board member has the authority to direct one of our administrators to act on his or her individual behalf. That direction must come from a majority of the board. The request should, should come through, through the committee. If it is information that is required in order, order for the committee to make an informed decision, but it would never be appropriate, for example, for a board member to direct the superintendent or the business administrator to prepare reports, provide information. It would also not be appropriate for a board member to contact, to contact a building principal for purposes of generating information or, or, or for responding to specific inquiries. No matter whether that inquiry or that information has a direct nexus to a matter before the board, no matter how well-meaning that request may be, you may need that information in order to make an informed decision. You do that by making the request to the superintendent. If that request can be handled readily, superintendent or the business administrator will provide you with that information, but if it is, in fact, a request that is going to require a substantial amount of time, that request should come through a majority of the board for determination as to whether the administration's resources should be devoted to that request and whether or not that will benefit the decision-making of the full board. Board members do not have access to our schools. Other than as visitors to our schools, you're required to adhere to the visitor's policy. When you walk into a school for purposes as a parent or a member of this community, your rights are no greater than mine or anyone else's going into one of our school buildings. Your policies reflect all of these provisions of the School Ethics Act. They are essentially in the mirror image, and so you have, as a board, adopted policies, some of which actually that go beyond the School Ethics Act. We'll talk about that when we get to the social media policy, but suffice it to say that your policies essentially reflect the provisions of the School Ethics Act, the school ethics decisions, and the advisory opinions. You delegate the responsibility for the operation of your schools to the superintendent. You hold him accountable for carrying out your mission, your policies, and your goals. Business administrator, of course, holds, holds the keys to the kingdom. You hold him responsible for the financial integrity and the operation of our schools. In terms of the board and the administration, the relationship is intended to be cooperative and, and not adversarial. This board impresses me with upholding that specific provision of the School Ethics Act. What that means in simple terms is if you require information in order to make an informed decision at a board meeting, you request that information from the administration in advance. That does two things. One, it ensures that they are prepared to answer your questions, and it also ensures that you have the information that you need to make an informed decision. If you make that request for the first time to the board, to the administration, where it is an agenda item, you certainly have the right to do it, but you may walk away frustrated because they may not have that information at their fingertips. Better to request it in advance. Members should be mindful of what matters are appropriate for public discussion versus private consultation. Code of Ethics indicates that a board member confronted with a community complaint must refer that complaint to the superintendent. We cannot act on a complaint as the board unless the superintendent's been given an opportunity to resolve that complaint informally or formally, if that be the case. More importantly, if members of the public are here, they come forward with a grievance, and it is compelling, no matter how compelling that grievance is, even assuming that they are ready to storm the vestiale in order to get that remedy, you have got to refer that complaint to the superintendent before the board can take action at a public meeting. Code of Ethics requires us as a board to support all, all district staff, including the administration. Your, the School Ethics, the School Ethics Act says, and so does your policy, "I will support and protect school personnel in the proper performance of their duties." A violation of this command occurs when there's evidence that a board member took deliberate action to undermine, oppose, compromise, or vilify one of our administrators in public. That certainly doesn't mean that board members cannot disagree with the superintendent or the business administrator or with each other. What it does mean, however, is that that discussion, that disagreement, that robust discussion, that healthy disagreement should take place here, and then once a decision is resolved, then we should support that decision. We should not go out into the public, express our dissent, particularly where that dissent would vilify the superintendent or would render him ineffective in terms of his ability to perform his responsibilities as the chief school administrator. So the board is a unit, not a collection of individuals. We're expected to share opinions, but once the board elects a single course of action by a majority vote, we are expected to support it. In open meetings, to preserve decorum, our board policy says that the president alone speaks on the board's behalf. He may request other members to contribute if he feels that they would be, would make a valuable contribution to our discussion, but it is, in fact, the president who speaks at board meetings. It is also the president who speaks to the press with regard to any matters that have been acted upon and are reflected in the minutes of the board. It is the superintendent that answers all inquiries by the press about the operation of our schools, and before a press release can be issued by the board president about a matter upon which the board has not acted, it requires a concurrence by a majority of the board before that press release is issued. The powers of the board and the authority of a board member are not coextensive. No board member by virtue of his or her office can exercise an administrative responsibility with regard to the operation of the school district or command, as I said, the services of any district employees. And board members cannot act without the authority of the board. Doesn't matter how laudatory that purpose is, board member would not have the ability to go out and to marshal the corporate officers in Hillsborough for the purposes of establishing partnerships or generating revenue or requesting they contribute to scholarship, scholarship funds in order to fund scholarships for the district. However well-meaning that may be, whatever laudatory that purpose may serve, it cannot be done by a single board member without approval by majority of the board. Board members on their own have no supervisory authority. When we are in executive session, we are, as a board, discussing things that are highly confidential. Often, we are discussing student matters, personnel matters. We are talking often about personnel matters involving an individual's illness. We are talking about employees who may have been placed on administrative leave. We are talking about students that may be subjected to harassment, intimidation, and bullying complaints, or disciplinary action, or seeking residency in our school district where that residency is challenged. So keep in mind that with regard to confidentiality, what is discussed in executive session of and about those individuals should not be disclosed to any third party. Confidentiality and the privacy of, of students and our employees and our families is sacrosanct. It is protected by federal and state law. Even an inadvertent disclosure of that information could result in liability. So that confidentiality also extends to matters involving students and personnel outside of executive session. It would never be appropriate, for example, for a board member to ask the superintendent to provide personnel information about an employee that you were concerned about. It would likewise never be appropriate for you to ask the superintendent to provide information about a student that you were concerned about. Perhaps your own son or daughter was involved with that student. Perhaps your own son or daughter was involved with that staff member. It would never be appropriate for you to expect the superintendent or any administrator to disclose that information to you as a board member unless that was a matter currently pending before the board and the employees had been properly raised notice and/or the students had also been given notice that there would be an executive discussion with regard to that particular issue involving those individuals. So personnel matters are exempt from disclosure under the Open Public Records Act. Student matters, information is protected, as I said, by the New Jersey Public Records Law and the Family Education Rights Privacy Act, FERPA. Negotiations are also subject to confidentiality in executive session. Code of Ethics. Code of Ethics is here. I'm not going to go through every one of these provisions. I have highlighted the most important provisions of the Code of Ethics, but I do want you to have the Code of Ethics here with, with regard to each of those provisions. What I do want to highlight, however, are two things, and that is with regard to complaints. Anyone save the board can file an ethics complaint, and an ethics complaint is filed with the School Ethics Commission, and what it is, what it alleges is that a board member has transgressed, has done something that is in violation of either the prohibited acts, which is one provision of the School Ethics Act, or the Code of Ethics, which are the other provisions of the School Ethics Act. And what is the difference? If you are alleged to have violated prohibited acts, which would be using your position to gain an unwarranted advantage for yourself, a family member, or a friend, using your position to game, to gain a financial advantage going into the superintendent, handing, handing him a resume of your recently graduated son or daughter, asking him to consider your son or daughter for a position, that would be a prohibited act. That would be using your position to gain an unwarranted advantage for a family member. If you are accused of that, that complaint is prosecuted by the Attorney General's Office, and that goes to an administrative law judge, ultimately then goes to the Commissioner of Education. The important distinction is that the prosecution is by, is by the Attorney General. If you are accused of violating a, a provision of the Code of Ethics, and by that I mean those things that I've just spoken with you about, violated confidentiality, spoken harshly and undermined the authority of your superintendent publicly, if you were accused of doing something like that, that would be, that would be prosecuted by the person who filed that complaint. It could have been filed by an administrator, it could have been filed by a member of the public. It could have been filed by one of you if you stepped back from your elected position as a board member and filed it as an individual taxpayer in Hillsborough. But again, the important distinction is those prohibited acts are viewed far more seriously than violations of the Code of Ethics, hence the difference in prosecution. So the School Ethics Commission, if there, if they make an adjudication that there has been a violation, can recommend that the commissioner issue a penalty. The School Ethics Commission makes a finding as to whether or not the act is violated. Goes to the Commissioner of Education with regard to the penalty only. Commissioner does not review the findings of the administrative law judge or the School Ethics Commission with regard to whether or not the act was violated, but the commissioner does review the penalty and determines whether it will be a reprimand, a censure, a suspension, or a removal of the board member. When allegations arise under the School Ethics Act and the complaint is filed, you are indemnified and you are held harmless in the event that the, in the, in the event that the violation that you are accused of occurred during the course and scope of your elected duties. So if you do something as a board member here at a board meeting, or if you do something as a board member outside of a board meeting, but you have done it pursuant rightly or wrongly, you have done it in pursuant of what you perceive as your responsibilities as a board member, then you are covered by the terms of our insurance policy, you're covered by Title 18A, you're entitled to be indemnified and held harmless, and our insurance carrier will provide you with a defense, move the process forward, but suffice it to say that you will be defended from the inception of the filing of that complaint. However, if you were to take private action outside the performance of your duties as a board member, you may very well not be entitled to indemnification. That would be a concern for you and for me, for all of us, because I never, we would never want a situation in which a board member is left without indemnification as a result of a complaint being filed against them. But you can see that in this recent case, Garcia versus Norwood Board of Education, the allegation here was that the board member was, was a trustee on the Board of Trustees of a foundation that advocated for special education students and their families, and that included special education families in the school district in which she was a board member. And so the allegation was that she took private action to the prejudice of the board. The allegation also was that that private action had nothing to do with her elected responsibilities as a board member. The commissioner found that she was not entitled to indemnification under the education statutes, which also meant there was no insurance coverage for that board member's defense. So again, you want to be very careful in terms of the conduct, your actions that you take. Do it here, do it in your committees, do it so that you have a qualified privilege with regard to your actions and your conduct. So I'm going to go right past these because these are the specific provisions of the Code of Ethics. I'm going past them because I've highlighted the important provisions, but again, I commend them to your own reading, particularly for our newest board member. So in terms of you being the policymakers and the, and the recommendation that, or really the directive that you not become involved in the day-to-day operations of the school district, you know, it is really kind of best demonstrated in terms of your role with regard to hiring personnel. So your obligation is to hire the most qualified individuals recommended by the superintendent. You cannot withhold that recommendation for arbitrary or capricious reasons, but generally speaking, best practice, you do not get involved in the interview process. The superintendent arranges for the interview process, so unless you are interviewing the superintendent, the business administrator, some school districts will also interview their principals, but generally speaking, you do not become involved in the interview process. There is no legal prohibition that prevents board members from being involved in the interview process, but the School Ethics Commission has advised that best practice is that you should not be involved in that below your central office administration, which would be your superintendent, your assistant superintendent, you know, perhaps your assistant superintendent for, for personnel. But again, if you are going to be involved, then these are the requirements. One, the superintendent must concur. Two, you can be involved in the interview process, but you cannot be interactive. So by that I mean that board members could sit, listen to the interviews, observe the responses by the candidates, but you could not be involved interactively in terms of asking questions, presenting questions. I think that with those kinds of restrictions, you would agree with me that, you know, the, the value of that, the utility of that is really very limited. I think you're better off doing that as a board once the candidate is brought to you for a recommendation. So examples of violations. Section D of the School Ethics Act, if you gave a direct order to school personnel or became directly involved in activities or functions with regard to the responsibility of personnel in the school district, that would be a violation. And as, the simplest way that I can explain this to you is if you walked out of, walked out of here this evening into the hallway, and there was a custodian standing right outside the door, and you felt that the hallway really needed to be, the hallway really needed to be addressed because there was debris all over the hallway, you could not direct that custodian to undertake that responsibility. You would need to ask the business administrator or the superintendent to do that. You could not go into the, one of the schools, for example, and ask the principal why the principal was recommending a reorganization of, of, of a program, or why there was going to be a realignment of staff. You could not do that, make that inquiry. You would have to direct that to the superintendent, he would have to respond to you, or you would do it here at a board meeting. You could not take deliberate action that resulted in undermining, opposing, compromising school personnel, and you could not attempt to resolve a complaint or to, to conduct an investigation or an inquiry, inquiry related to the complaint without referring it to the superintendent, without violating those various provisions of the School Ethics Act. So there are also advisory opinions, so the School Ethics, the School Ethics Act adjudicates complaints, they also issue advisory opinions. So if you, as a board member, are questioning whether you can do something, you know, is it appropriate for me to, for example, sit on a personnel committee that conducts exit interviews because I'm concerned about the turnover in the school district, and I'd like to know why, in fact, employees are leaving this school district and choosing other districts? The question is, would you be able to participate in that exit interview committee, or would that, in fact, be a violation of the School Ethics Act? Well, the answer to that is, it would be a violation, and that, that would be the day-to-day operation of the school district, but my point, my point really is in emphasizing that you have the ability to- But my point really is in emphasizing that you have the ability to get an advisory opinion. If you get it in by the 10th day of the month, generally speaking, they're pretty good about this, they will get you the advice at the next monthly meeting of the School Ethics And you can see that the example I gave you is highlighted right there in Advisory Opinion A3115. That board member asked whether, in fact, they may sit on an interview committee when established by the superintendent in order to determine, actually, that may not be it. We'll get to it. This is with regard to the interview process, I'm sorry. Advisory opinions. What you can and cannot do, you can see that in all these advisory opinions, board members went to the School Ethics Commission to find out whether or not they could do something. And so the question in the first advisory opinion was, you know, could I as a board member be a volunteer for a school theatrical production by assisting with casting, rehearsals, lighting? The answer was no. As a board member, you would be giving direct orders to school personnel and students, you'd be engaging in the day-to-day operation of the schools, that volunteerism would not be permitted. The next one asked whether that board member could be a leader of a school club that meets on school grounds. Being in a position of oversight and authority over students is beyond the scope of the policymaking authority of the board, that would be a violation of several provisions of the Code of Ethics. An opinion was asked for, and the School Ethics Commission said, yes, you can volunteer by merely constructing sets for a school musical, plays was also fine, limited interaction with students and staff. You could assist the marching band by building props, repairing equipment, and loading and unloading equipment. You could also do all of that, because that would be indirect and not direct, would not be the day-to-day operation of the schools. With regard to those things that you do outside of your elected board positions, you could be a trustee of the local educational foundation, you could be engaged in fundraising, you could be a member of the PTO or PTA, you could be the president of those organizations. Those are outside organizations, there are no restrictions on your ability to volunteer with those organizations, except if they come before the board for use of facilities, to conduct a tricky trade, to establish grants that are going to be given to teachers through the fundraising of the educational foundation, you would have to recuse yourself, not abstain, but recuse. And on that, I want to highlight that the distinction between the two has been drawn this year, probably for the first time, most clearly. An abstention means that you could participate in all of the discussion that takes place, but when the vote is called, you decide to abstain for some reason, a personal reason. You're not convinced, you have not been able to, with the information provided to you, you have not been able to make a final decision. That is an abstention. If however, something comes before you and you are conflicted, so if you're a member of the educational foundation, they're going to make grants to teachers who have requested those grant monies, you must recuse yourself. And by that I mean, you're here, yes, you don't need to step out of the meeting, but you cannot engage in any interactive discussion with the board, and you cannot vote, but your vote would be a recusal, not an abstention. So you'll be happy to know, you can work the chains at the high school football games. So a couple of decisions I want to talk to you about, notable decisions. Case out of Angledwood Cliffs. This is a board member whose child was an alleged victim of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. She believed that she could be in executive session while that case was discussed, provided that she did not vote publicly when the superintendent came out and presented that case for the board's consideration, and you know you do this at the second meeting of the board. You know that these cases are presented to you at the first meeting, but they're not advice and consent, they're only advice. They're presented in executive session, the second meeting of the board. The superintendent makes a recommendation, at that point, the board either affirms, modifies, or reverses that HIV decision. This board member thought that she could listen to the confidential discussion as long as she didn't vote on it. And as a result, she was found to have been in violation of the Code of Ethics for school board members. The penalty imposed by the Commissioner was that she was publicly censured for her conduct. Second case that you see up there is a case in which a board member decided to conduct a unity walk on school grounds. She thought it would be a great way to bring everybody together. Unfortunately, she didn't discuss it with the board, she didn't discuss it with the superintendent, God bless you, she did not discuss it with the business administrator, and instead what she did is she went about the business of organizing that unity walk. She used her school district email, the district server, in order to enlist district sponsors, in order to get guest speakers. Ultimately, it was determined that that was private action by a board member, acting without the authority of the board, that had the potential to compromise the board. And how did it have the potential to compromise the board? Think about all of those people on the school's campus for that unity walk, the potential for injury, the potential for liability, any of those things could have happened, lack of supervision. So again, however laudatory that purpose may have been, she acted without the authority of the board, acted as an individual, took private action, and ultimately violated the School Ethics Act. Next case, the board member was censured when she made accusations against the superintendent, essentially violating those provisions that say that you will support the administration in the performance of their duties. That too resulted in a censure. That Tarver vs. Wingfield case, that board member was reprimanded. And why? There was a confidential discussion. The NFL wanted to use the athletic fields of the Orange School District in order to put on a presentation that was going to be televised. That board member was so excited about the discussions in executive session, he decided to go out and tell everybody about what was going to happen. And unfortunately, those disclosures blew up the negotiations. Ultimately, that disclosure of confidential information, contract negotiations, which should have only been discussed in executive session, was found to be a violation. Most recently, the superintendent of Middlesex County violated two school ethics rules when she approved a list of substitutes that included her son. Her defense was that there were 300 substitutes that were being appointed in that school district, she overlooked it. So the bottom line is that even an inadvertent decision on the part of the superintendent to recommend, and keep in mind that relatives of board members cannot be appointed to a position in this school district while you are a member of the board. If you have a relative who was hired prior to you taking your oath of office, they can continue to be employed in the school district. There's also a provision that says that the superintendent cannot recommend one of his relatives or a relative of a board member. So in this case, it was the superintendent that was found to have committed a violation of the School Ethics Act. And most recently, there was a case in Jersey City, and that case discusses the defense of advice of counsel. So let me talk to you a little bit about that, because it's an important case, just recently decided by the appellate division, which is the appeals court in New Jersey, just below the New Jersey Supreme Court. So here's what happened in that case, and it's something that I think many of us are familiar with here. There was a lawsuit that was filed, and individual board members were named in the lawsuit as individuals. It happens, not frequently, but it does happen. So these individual board members were asked, after the case was settled, they were asked to sign off on the settlement agreement because they were individually named. So they did. There was a settlement, there were releases, the lawsuit was over, they signed off, obviously, on the terms of the settlement. The settlement came before the board, and the two board members said to the board attorney, can I vote on this? And the board attorney said, yes, you can. It is not a violation of the Code of Ethics if you vote on this. It is not using your position to gain an unwarranted advantage. And so they voted on that settlement agreement, and it was approved by the board. And shortly thereafter, someone filed an ethics complaint against those board members that voted on that settlement agreement. And it was ultimately found that, yes, they had violated a provision of the Code of Ethics. What went up on appeal was whether or not there should be a penalty administered by the Commissioner, whether they should be publicly censured for having committed an ethical violation. And their defense was advice of counsel. So for the first time, our courts had to look at that defense, which is a legitimate legal defense, that a public official acts upon the advice of their attorney. And the appellate division said, you know what? It is not fair to impose a penalty on board members who sought the advice of their attorney before they exercised their vote. So the takeaway here is that there could be a technical violation of the Code of Ethics, but no penalty can be imposed on a board member if you sought my advice before you casted your vote on something you were ultimately found to have been conflicted with. Free speech in the act? So it's generally said that as board members, your First Amendment rights, free speech rights are restricted, but they are certainly not inert. They are certainly not, you certainly maintain your right of free speech, however, it is restricted. We're restricted with regard to comments you make about the Hillsborough School District. And if you are going to express your personal opinion about this school district, you have an obligation to self-identify. And what that means very simply is that you need to say, my name is Stephen Fogarty, and I'm a member of the Hillsborough Board of Education, and what I'm about to say is my own personal opinion, that has not been authorized by the board, and I do not speak on the board's behalf. I am then free to express my opinion as long as my opinion is factually accurate. Because if it's not factually accurate, then that would be a violation of the Code of Ethics. So again, in order to avoid taking private action, because that's what you're doing when you speak freely as an individual, in order to avoid taking private action, that prejudice is the board, you need to self-identify. So the School Ethics Commission has also said time and again, we are not the civility police. And a board member may say something that is highly offensive, it may be inappropriate, it may even shock the conscience in terms of what a board member says, but we are not going to police that. That is up to the board to police that itself. Stating something that is offensive or objectionable is not a violation of the prohibited acts or the Code of Ethics, and that's probably no better illustrated than in this case, where board members who had controversial and inflammatory statements, calling the governor a tyrannical POS, encouraged teachers to leave the NJEA, critical about masking in schools, calling discussions about gender identity a sick war on children, all of those things were found to be highly offensive and inappropriate, but the School Ethics Commission said they are not violations of the School Ethics Act. We are not the civility police, that needs to be monitored and marshaled by the local Board of Education. I've given you the disclaimer if you need it, and particularly if you're going to be on social media. You know, for those of you who have heard me do this presentation in the past, I am no fan of social media for board members, I think it's a trap for the unwary. I think even thumbs up and thumbs down is a form of speech that can get board members in trouble. If you're going to engage in discussion about the Hillsborough School District on social media, you want to make sure you have a disclaimer on that website, on whatever that communication is that you're expressing on social media. You have the right to do it, it's got to be factually accurate, you need to make sure you disclaim. You as a board have social media guidelines. You have a policy that is not required by state law, but you have decided to adopt a policy that essentially is for the purpose of establishing the guardrails for us as board members, and I commend you for doing it. Only a minority of school districts in the state have done this, so I applaud you for having this policy. It basically says that as board members, you should use good judgment, that you should respect each other, that you should respect staff members and students, that you shouldn't disclose confidential information, that you should never use your position in order to gain an unwarranted advantage, that you will not post anything on a social networking site that would disclose confidential information about students, or families, or employees, or that would undermine any of our administrators in the school district. And most importantly, what it reflects is that we will treat each other with mutual respect and dignity with those with whom we deal with. So keep in mind, for those of you that may be completing a campaign, or may be running a campaign in the future, that once you are elected to the board, the School Ethics Commission says that that campaign website should be discontinued. Conflicts of interest, you can take a look at that if you have a family member or a relative that is employed here or in another school district as an employee that is represented by the NJEA, the AFT. If you have a family member who may be an administrator in another school district, you can take a look at this, there's a chart there for you that allows you to determine whether you can be involved in negotiations with that employee unit here in Hillsborough, whether you can vote on the contract, whether you can be involved in issues involving the superintendent, or any of the administrators who might supervise your relatives. And if you have any questions about any of that with regard to negotiations, they should be addressed to the superintendent, so you can get my advice, because now you can rely on my advice. Any questions? Thank you, my pleasure.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fogarty. Ms. Nurse, we'll jump back to, actually, no, just I want to double-check, no board comments or questions for Mr. Fogarty before we wrap? No? Okay. Ms. Nurse.
The HR committee met at the last week of January. We started off, since it was the first meeting, with the new committee, a review of the committee norms. We discussed revised job description with building monitors, new club proposals, a personnel matter, and the 24/25 district calendar.
All right, thank you very much. And that concludes both committee reports and the board president's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. For my superintendent's report tonight, first, thank you, Mr. Fogarty, and I just want to let all board members that, even though it's an attachment, I will get you a copy of his entire presentation through Brass Tax Hour Communication. I do want to take a moment to recognize that February is Black History Month, and make sure that we are acknowledging that. And I also want to thank Mayor Britting. For those of you who don't know, and the board members don't know this, he has invited some of our students to speak at tomorrow night's township committee meeting at 7:30, and receive a proclamation about Black History Month. This board not too long ago created a student union for those students, and our mayor is giving them a voice as a part of Black History Month. I thought that was very nice, and I will be there to support those students. I also wanted to congratulate Cindy Poval, who you may know, in September, I hired as our new Director of School Counseling. However, last year, for most of the year, she was just an outstanding school counselor. She won the School Counselor of the Year for the county, and I'm thrilled to inform the public that she is also the School Counselor of the Year for the entire state of New Jersey. You can clap for that, everybody. And Ms. Poval, who is now a director, is no longer just a school counselor, is being moved on for the national award, and will be invited to Washington DC to discuss issues related to school counseling, as well as see if she is the national school award winner. Congratulations to Ms. Poval, we are very proud of you. Recently, I've gotten a couple of questions from the community relative to our referendum, or Build Borough Back referendum, and some of the hires, particularly when it comes to building monitors. Some people have asked me, who are these people that we have hired? And I wanted to let you know that the community was introduced to retired police chief David Stoco, who is our coordinator of school safety operations, who has been very busy in his first month with us, trying to get things off the ground. But the other people that we have hired recently, I want to make sure I have all of this right, they're all retired law enforcement personnel, include a retired officer, retired detective, a retired sergeant, multiple retired lieutenants. We have three spots still to fill, and Mr. Stoco is very active in sifting through the applications, trying to find the right people to fit, but everybody that we are bringing to schools not only has prior law enforcement experience, but some kind of interaction with kids. And I look forward to reporting to you and getting pictures of the community of what we're doing over time, but these are highly qualified individuals. we're doing over time, but these are highly qualified individuals. In case you didn't know, the weather tomorrow looks bad. I've already called for a delayed opening tomorrow, and depending on what we see in the morning, you never know, that could transition into something more. And I know at times some people are like, why didn't he do this? Or why didn't he do that? I'm, I'm happy with the way that we've handled things so far. I know sometimes people want to know the night before. Right now, I have no snow on the ground, so I'm not canceling school the, the night before. And if I took those actions a couple of other times when we had floods or when we had snow, we would be out of snow days already, and we would be losing our spring break. So we have one snow day built in. If for some reason that snow day is tomorrow, we will get a revised calendar out to everyone and let everybody know. We still have one more built in, so that would be the tomorrow, so we're not losing anything else. But any other weather events beyond that would be difficult, and we'd have to take away from somewhere within our calendar, and I will make sure that that is spread out to the community. But let's hope it's not too much snow tomorrow, even though the reports do not look great at this time. Finally, I wanted to let the community, as well as the board, know that over the next month or so, we are going to be working hard on our budget. This budget is tight. This budget is probably going to involve painful decisions, and I want to make something very clear to the public. We have our budget and S2. If that's a bucket, S2 put a big hole in the bottom of that bucket. We've been bleeding money out of that for years now, millions and millions and millions of dollars. This past fall, we had another bucket, which was called the referendum, which was Build Borough Back, and we're hiring people back. But I want to make it clear, that's two separate buckets. Whether or not this bucket passed, like it did, or whether or not it failed, there's still a hole in this bucket over here. The community did not give me a referendum and say, hey, Mike, with that money, do whatever you want with it, you know? Solve the problems of the budget, you know? Put a new roof on, whatever you need to do. No, it was very specific. It was about hiring personnel. So we still have a hole in our operational day-to-day budget. I have no details right now or anything. I'm just letting you know that there's a difference right there, and we're going to be talking about this in committee multiple times before we bring forth a tentative budget, before that's reviewed with more public input, and before we bring a final budget. But I just want to make it very clear to the public that the, what you entrusted me with was money to hire personnel, this bucket over here. You didn't say, fix everything that is wrong with the district and whatever the state has taken away, plug that hole. That wouldn't have gotten us the building monitors that I just talked about. That wouldn't have gotten us a whole lot of other things. So a lot of work still needs to be done with everybody here sitting at the dais, and when we do have information, we will be communicating that out to you. So that being said, I, I know kids at home, I don't think there's many kids at home watching the board meeting, but I know you, what, you turn your, your pajamas inside out or something or backwards. We'll have fun with that tonight, but we are starting with a delay tomorrow morning. And, Mr. President, that concludes my superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the approval of meeting minutes. There are four items here. Motion to approve special meeting minutes from January 20th, motion to approve executive session minutes from January 22nd, regular public minutes from January 22nd, and then the special meeting minutes from February 5th. Can I get a motion in a second? We'll do a motion in a second. I will. Who's going to take a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Any, any comment?
I was not present at the January 20th meeting, so I need to...
You abstain, your vote will abstain from that.
I'll abstain.
So just when you mentioned, say, abstain from this, and, actually, we'll mark that one as abstain, because we'll do all in favor. Any other comments before we move? Okay, all in favor?
All in favor.
Thanks. All right. We'll now move to comments from the board public, public input on the action agenda and the 2024-2025 budget. We very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There'll be two 30-minute periods of time that mainly will open public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person during the first public comment period. Members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaws 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offer as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In cases where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when the member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Urban Public Meetings Act and the Privacy Rights of Public Employees and Compass Therapy do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Carlin Dunn, Hillsborough High School. And I wanted to talk about a correspondence that is listed on the agenda here, to which I sent the board on January 28th, and I respond, or, excuse me, I received no response to. So I am the Unified Track and Field Coach at Hillsborough High School, and Unified Sports Programs can be found in select schools across New Jersey and aim to unite general education students with students of both physical and/or cognitive disabilities through competition, team camaraderie, and a shared love of physical activity. General education students in this program are known as partners, and special education students are known as athletes. And until this year, the $100 sports fee has been waived for partners who volunteer their time for this program, and I'm asking that the board consider waiving the athletic fee for Unified Sports Partners moving forward. In Unified Programs, there are ratios that need to be respected that have been set forth by Special Olympics New Jersey and the NJISIAA. And all three of our Unified Programs have different ratios that need to be met, but the premise remains the same, which is if we don't meet these ratios of general education and special education students, we can't participate. Without the partners, we don't meet the ratios, ultimately robbing our special education students of opportunities that they are too often unable to attain anyway. Excuse me. So implementing this fee for partners means our programs ultimately will not survive. Our partners help model appropriate social behaviors. They help athletes make friends, and they assist the coaches and support staff at practices and competitions, which is huge because our numbers have been rising in recent years like crazy. They help our students build confidence, and seeing our partners at the high school go out of their way to, you know, make connections with these students in the hallways, it's really so special to see. We have the class president or varsity athletes and older students going above and beyond to go out of their way to connect with these students and make them feel special, to make them feel as part of something that they typically don't feel part of. They also earn varsity letters and get varsity jackets, which makes them feel just like everybody else, which is really, really important to us. Our partners could be doing literally anything else with their time. They give up hours at their part-time jobs. They stay up late finishing schoolwork when they insist on going to away games and meets with us, especially in the spring when AP testing starts, reach internships are happening, and student council events are really kicking up. Again, they insist on coming to these events so that they can support their friends and their teammates. This is a team that's unlike any other, and we want to continue drawing people to this. So again, I want to reiterate, without our partners, this program doesn't exist. So all we do is encourage our children to be good people, and now that several are taking the leap to volunteer their time, it feels like they're being punished for doing so. And asking people who are volunteering to pay a $100 fee seems unfair to us. So I'm hopeful that after hearing exactly what these students do for the program, that this idea will be reconsidered for this group.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Cindy Hamel from Hillsborough, New Jersey. I'm here to speak as well for waiving the fees for the volunteers at the Unified Sports Programs. I'm a parent of a special needs child that has benefited greatly from the Unified Sports Programs. She was a founding member of the Rockin Raiders, the inclusive cheer program that sadly met its demise because of COVID. She's currently part of the Borough FC United, the newly formed United Soccer Team that started just this fall. Pictures from the first soccer game that you, Mr. Volpe, posted to social media, my daughter was in those pictures. And she will, for her fifth year, be part of the Running Raiders, the Unified Track Team this coming spring. Being active is important for any high school student, and being able to participate in sports, as you know, has numerous, numerous health benefits. But beyond just being active, these sports offer so, so much more, and frankly, what I consider to be much more important, a much more important aspect of these are, of the programs are the additional stuff. My daughter is in a self-contained class at the high school. Because of these sports, she's gotten to know a wider variety of students in the high school that she sees in the cafeteria or the hallways, and a simple hello from them makes her day. These students who give up their own time to be part of these sports are nothing short of wonderful. They help, encourage, fist bump, cheer, high five, lead, and most importantly, they're integral to the success of these sports. They make my daughter feel special, that she's better than Michael Jordan, Tom Brady, and Ronaldo combined, and that, that's priceless. That's what these programs are all about. I have no problem paying the participation fee for my daughter to play in these sports. However, these volunteers should not be subjected to the same fees. They're in a category all of their own, and they should not be compared to the football players, the soccer players, the hockey, the field hockey players, the request players, et cetera. Forcing them to pay these fees for these sports just seems wrong. So as a parent of a special needs student, I'm sincerely asking you to reconsider having these volunteers pay the sports, pay the participation fees for these sports. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So thank you for the comments. It's not a question-and-answer session, but I can tell you that that email has sparked, I think, nine follow-up emails on people that are discussing the, discussing the Sports Fees Committee. So this is actively being discussed. I'll get back to you with a response once we have some more information, and I'll give you a general response to your request, but this and other topics similar are being discussed by a subcommittee. Thank you. All right. All right, we will, seeing no other comments, I will close the first public comment period. Sorry, I scrolled the wrong way here, and we'll move on to the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would ask for the board's consideration to approve the motion, following motions in the area of education. Professional travel-related expenses, firming the superintendent's harassment, intimidation, and bullying determinations, approving staff for administration of portfolio assessments, approving overnight trips, approving a memorandum of agreement with Kane University, approving the submission of application and acceptance of funds in the amount of $175,761 from FY2024 School Development Authority Emergent Needs and Capital Maintenance in School Districts Grant. Motion to approve acceptance of federal fiscal year 2023 state and local cybersecurity grant program for a total amount of $191,012.70 over four years. Motion to approve the acceptance of the local Foods for Schools grant awarding the amount of $21,433.97. And a motion to amend item 11.7 approved on January 22nd, 2024 to revise the amount of the additional award from $7,301 to $380.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the agenda?
I have a question.
Sure.
I guess this would be for the BA, and why, item 10.9, why was that grant cut back? Do you have any information on that?
Can you give the information on the AARP?
I can give the information that Michelle gave me. So basically, when the amendment, when the, when the allocation was given to us, it was a preliminary allocation, and then the state went in and revised it, and so we have to approve the revised amount.
It was essentially, I was waiting for a more dramatic explanation. It's the state budget software. We went in the first time, they gave us a number, and when they updated it, it was a different number. Nothing we did.
Okay, seeing no other questions, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, with the exception of 10.5.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, except on 10.1, no to the three staff traveling to Colorado. Thank you.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of human resources, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions, approve the following motions. An addendum to the HEA collective negotiations agreement, retirements and resignations, appointments, approving an acting vice principal, approving change in employment status, approving transfers and changes in assignments, approving leaves of absence, approving mentors and buddies, approving co-curricular advisors, approving coaches' spring sports, approving student teachers, approving six and seven-period coverage, approving extra coverage, and approving group changes.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the action agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of operations, I'd ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Settlement agreement, proposal for Triangle Elementary School Playground, MOA with the State New Jersey Office of Homeland Security and Preparedness, resolution for a ROD grant agreement, resolution to delegate authority to the school business administrator as it relates to the ROD grant project, and accepting donations.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we'll go on to the second public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There'll be two, 30-minute periods of time that mainly will open public comment where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per bylaws 0167. Before you state your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, rather offers opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In cases where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be a time when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Urban Public Meetings Act and the Privacy Rights of Public Employees and Compass Therapy do not permit the board to discuss personal issues in public session.
All right, seeing none, we will close public comment, move to any board comment, if there is any. Ms. Stats?
Last Wednesday, I attended the Unified Basketball Game, and that's what two people commented on. And, you know, as, as they said, that students with special needs are, are the athletes, and the general ed students are partners, and actually, Ms. Nurse's daughter was one of the partners, and it was just so, so inspirational to see them play. Pretty much everybody supported one another, even on, on, whether it was the partners or the athletes helping one another on the same team or even on the other team. So it was really warm-hearted to see and very educational for myself and for anybody else who was in attendance. So it's a great program that we have.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for the update.
Can I just follow up about that, too? While we're talking about our Unified Sports Program, which has really grown, I've had a lot of experience with this in the past, and I have been to some games, and I've seen Mrs. Nurse there with her, with her daughter. And last year, when I was superintendent in a previous school district, that school district actually made it to the state finals with the Unified Program, and they played 100 in Central at the Jersey Mike's Arena on the Rutgers campus with announcers and a big screen and big crowds and everything you could see from a real basketball program. This is a real basketball program. And I'm happy to let you know, and Ms. Nurse, maybe you know this, too, our, our team qualified, our unified team, for the postseason. So I don't know if we're ready for, for prime time to get to Jersey Mike's Arena yet, but we've just laid the groundwork for this, and we are taking slow baby steps. But it's, it's real sports, it's really exciting, and the kids really do a good job. So if they do get there, I'm planning on going back to Jersey Mike's again, so keep your fingers crossed.
That's great.
That is awesome.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other board members? Is there a question? Any? Okay. Great. All right, seeing no other comments from the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you.